Broke up. Broke up, have been said.
It is now five o'clock. I would like to call to order the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two Policy and Governance Committee meeting. One point two. Good evening. Thank you to everyone for being here. I am Judy McInnes Murray, the Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee. I'm an at-large representative on the Board of Education. We will now have introductions of committee members, starting with board members, administrative staff, board office staff, and board legal counsel. Vice Chair Alvaro, would you start, please?
Yes, I can. Hello and good evening, everyone. My name is Alvaro Seron Ruiz, and I'm Vice Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, as well as a student member of the Board of Education.
Hi, Pamela Boozer Struthers, member of the Policy and Governance Committee and Representative of District Three.
Good evening. I'm Sonia Williams. I represent District Nine, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Board of Education.
Ms. Welsh.
Good evening. I'm Robin Welsh, and I'm the Director of Government Relations, Compliance, and Procedures.
And our board legal counsel.
Good afternoon, everyone. Dennis Whitely III with the Law Firm of Shipley and Horn.
And I'm sorry I skipped over the board staff. Mr. Joe Day Newsome.
Good evening. My name is Joe Day Newsome. I'm the Director of the Board Staff.
Hi, my name is Cindy Adley. I'm the Administrative Secretary to the Board Staff.
Hello, my name is Jessica Guerrero. I'm also an Administrative Secretary for the Board Office.
Thank you, guys. One point three. May I have a motion to approve the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting agenda?
I move to approve the September thirteenth Policy and Governance Committee agenda.
Second, it has been moved and seconded to adopt the August, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting agenda. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. One point four, approval of committee meeting minutes from August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. May I have a motion to approve the August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes? So moved? It has been moved. It has been moved and seconded to approve the August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. All in favor, board members? Aye.
Aye.
Hi, it's Dame.
Thank you. We need three votes to pass, but the motion passed. Update on May Ad-Hoc Committee Blueprint. I will now yield the floor to Ms. Boozer Struthers, Boozer Struthers, to give us an update on the May Ad-Hoc Committee Blueprint.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair McInnes Murray. Just a quick update, just a reminder that I serve on the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, May Ad-Hoc Committee on the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, and this is a group of twelve of the twenty-four Boards of Education in Maryland. We meet in order to ensure that boards are better fully informed of the responsibilities to the blueprint implementation and to learn from each other around administration and board engagement around our accountability. As many of you may have been following this summer, the Accountability Board did finally launch and has had an excellent series of online meetings, really diving deep into each aspect of the blueprint, and this, of course, has meant that our administration leads and board members throughout the state can be fully informed and ask questions, and some of our legislators actually come to those meetings as well. So the committee that I, the ad hoc committee that I'm part of, did meet on August thirtieth. We did have a presentation from Mary Pat Fannin, who's the Executive Director of PIZAM, which is the Public School Superintendents Association of Maryland, to hear from the superintendent perspective on implementation, and then we had a very good discussion on local priority issues so that as a group, we could come together, bring those issues to a sort of top-five-or-ten list, so that as we head into the next legislative session, we can be really clear with our delegations about where we're having some pain points in the blueprint. And so that's, that's, you know, in a nutshell, kind of our, our purpose and how we are working towards that May has a voice in Annapolis as the blueprint continues, that legislators look at things that maybe need to be tweaked and to have a voice in that. So that's my report, and if anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions for Board Member Boozer Struthers? Okay, hearing none.
I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
I forgot. I forgot to put the hand up. Board Member Boozer Struthers, would this be a recurring update that we would be getting, or would it be like, kind of like a monthly basis?
Yeah, so we put, this is our standing agenda item, which is a best practice for blueprint implementation. You may have seen that Strong Schools Maryland, the advocacy organization, monitoring implementation has certainly recommended this and has highlighted the PG CPS that we, we received, like, you know, all high marks on the, on the Strong Schools report, and this was an important piece of it. So it's a standing agenda item. I'll have a report probably every other month. I think we're going to be on an every-two-month meeting schedule this year. Maybe we'll meet more frequently as needed, and then Dr. Kara Libby, who is our administration lead on the blueprint, will come on a, on a regular basis, and I apologize, off the top of my head, I, I don't remember if we already set those two updates for this year, but I will certainly circle back to my notes and also we can, you know, clarify that and make sure we're planning ahead.
Thank you.
Anything else from any board members? With that said, our plan is to have the update on the May Ad-Hoc Committee on every agenda, and if Board Member Boozer Struthers has something to share, we'll say that she will give a report and give us an update. If not, we will say no update today. Okay? But it will be standard. Three point O, policies for discussion. There is one policy for discussion today. Three point one, the policy is zero one oh eight, Code of Conduct, Basic Commitments. I will now yield the floor to Mr. Whitely to give us an overview of the policy one oh eight, and afterwards, we will have a discussion. Mr. Whitely.
Good morning. This is the standing Code of Conduct for the Board. Again, outlines the Code of Ethics for the Board. It outlines the core beliefs, values, and commitments. It also discusses board removals. It's my recommendation with reference to the policy, I have two recommendations based on the meetings that I've attended and the issues I've heard discussed by the Board. Specifically, I would add a number eleven. On page four, it would be under Core Beliefs, Values, and Commitments. If you see, there's one through ten currently, and I'm requesting or suggesting that we add an eleven. Actually, if, if I was doing a totally new policy, it would probably be number one, but just to keep it consistent with what's already outstanding, I would just add it as an eleven, and it would say attend board meetings. And the language I'm suggesting would be Board of Education members should notify the Chair or the County Board Office if they cannot attend part or all of the scheduled meeting. If the board member is more than thirty minutes late for a board meeting, that board member will be deemed absent for that meeting. A board member who fails to attend at least fifty percent of the meetings of the Board during any consecutive twelve-month period shall be considered to have resigned, and that's consistent with the state government's Article Section eight five oh one. And I would also add, again, this is based on what I've observed at board meetings under removal of board members. After the first sentence, which reads, "With approval of the Governor, the State Board may remove a board member for immorality, misconduct in office, incompetence, or willful neglect of duty." After that sentence, I would add another sentence that said, "Any board member who misses three consecutive board meetings, board work sessions, emergency meetings, and/or work sessions shall be, or fails to attend twenty-five percent of the meetings during any consecutive twelve-month period, shall be removed from office for willful neglect of duty." So I know at the meetings, we discuss members not attending meetings, members attending meetings late, and to the extent that this is an issue the Board believes needs to be corrected, I believe that these policy changes would give the Board some ability to enforce board attendance and to remove board members who did not attend. And one more thing, the language dealing with missing fifty percent of meetings came from the State Board of Education's Governance and Policy Committee. So if it's a state board policy, it's probably best practice for the county as well. So I know that was a lot. If you want to take it and have me break it up, or if you have specific questions, however the Board wants to handle it.
I thank you, Mr. Whitely. I'm trying to get my face back. All right. Thank you so much. Board members, at this time, do you have, you've heard from our legal counsel and the suggestion, oh, Sonia, that's what I'm saying. Do you have some comments? Board Member Williams?
Thank you for, for that information and the, the verbiage that you're adding. I, I, there was one part in there about, I think about missing a certain number of meetings or being late for a certain number of meetings. Did you have a timeframe in there, like two months or something like that?
Well.
Didn't hear you.
You missed, well, initially, with reference to resignation, the State Board has a policy that if any board members misses fifty percent of their meetings in any twelve consecutive month period, they are deemed to have resigned. So that's the first time period with reference to willful neglect. It's if you miss three consecutive meetings or if you miss twenty-five percent of any board meetings within any twelve-month period. So there are two separate policies. One policy deals with resignation. One policy deals with what's called willful neglect of duty.
Okay, I was just, I missed, I misunderstood the number of months that you mentioned, but twelve months is perfect. And so.
This is just a recommendation that the Board thinks it should be more or less.
Well, I'm just thinking that twelve months, what that does is that could possibly overlap in a fiscal year. So let's say someone misses some in one fiscal year, and then they don't return in the fall for, you know, the next fiscal year. It, that could be, you know, willful neglect, or even if they're late or the other criteria. So, yeah, I'm good with the twelve months. So thank you. Board Member Pamela Boozer Struthers, thank you, Ms. Williams.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad to, that we're moving forward with this addition, and I wanted to just ask, you know, our process now with this policy oh one oh eight, is it, we're now opening it up for feedback and consideration for like the next draft to come back as a review or action policy? And I just want to be clear on that if there's other aspects of this policy, we want to address that we are now in that period of doing that.
I will answer that. We are in the, in that period, but I was hoping that we would get out of today's meeting is that the board members present would make suggestions. If you don't make them here, you can send them to Mr. Whitely, and, because I have a couple suggestions, but, and then he will come back to us at the next meeting, incorporating those changes, and then we would have another discussion. So it would not be ready for action. We need to really, I think, well, I'll let you guys finish, and then I'll. So anything else, Board Member Boozer Struthers?
No, that's very helpful that there can be a couple rounds that this isn't just on deadline for next time.
It's too serious, right? Um, Robin Welsh?
And again, if there are issues that the board, and I've only been to a handful of board meetings, and these are the issues that I've seen come up at the board meetings, if there are other issues that need to be addressed, you, like I say, like, like the Chair said, email me, and I will try to incorporate them into the policy.
Ms. Welsh.
Also, and a follow-up to what Board Member Boozer Struthers asked, you have, Mr. Whitely has incorporated them and everything. It will still go through the review process on the CEO's end so that myself and OGC and the Dr. Goldson will have to review it. The other thing I wanted to ask, and this is actually, it was Board Member McInnes Murray who suggested this to us, to look at the State Board's booklet that they have, and there are several items in there that I just sort of wanted to throw out as possibilities that you might also would like to consider in your policy. On page ten of there, they have expectations for board members, and they're talking about state board members, but it applies for local board members also. For example, there's a bullet that talks about read all written materials prior to each meeting in preparation for discussion and decision-making. So the idea being that board members are prepared when they come to a board meeting. And then it also talks about if a board member is speaking, and they may have expertise in education and all those types of things, but they must be clear that they're giving their personal opinion, that they're not speaking for the board because they're, they're a member of the board. It would be that chairperson actually speaks for the board. And that each individual state board member doesn't have the authority to bind or speak or act for the board. Let's see. Also, respect and protect the confidentiality of all information shared and discussed in executive session, and we did in the last policy that we talked about when we were looking at financial impropriety and misconduct and whistleblower, but this might be something that you would also want to incorporate into your, into this particular policy, since it is talking about the Code of Conduct for board members. Let's see, and then, of course, it talks about not talking, you know, not discussing personal matters at a board meeting. And then there's another thing that talks about media and media and public relations so that that if you, let's say you were interviewed by a reporter or something, that it would be clear, unless it's something that's been put in policy or a decision that the board has made, as far as if you're sharing your own personal opinions, then you must make sure you are clear with the media that it is that you are sharing your personal opinion, not necessarily the board's opinion. And then the other thing is, is that in public communications, all board members should support all official actions, policies, and positions of the board once, once adopted. So I thought maybe some of these from the State Board, their code, it's sort of like their Code of Conduct might be things that you might be interested in, including also in the, in your policy.
Any additional comments, Ms. Welsh? Do you have any additional comments? Okay, going to Board Member Boozer Struthers first.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think those are all excellent, and I'm so glad to hear the State Board has those in place, and I think that, you know, what I'm hearing is a great model for, for our board as well. So thank you.
And Board Member Sonia Williams?
Thank you. I agree. These are great additions. Some of those things I thought were already included, such as the, the one around speaking for the, speaking in public and how it's your personal opinion, not the opinion of the board, and also in particular, the one around around supporting actions that the board has taken in public. You should support those actions. And so are, were those removed, or they're no longer in the policy?
Sonia, I'll go to Pam first.
Pam, are you going to answer that question?
I was going to say, you're, you're right. There are, there are some statements that overlap, for sure, that we've already have some in place and, and a, you know, some affording. So they aren't, they aren't all new. There's just some in there that are, maybe it's strengthening the statement, but absolutely.
Yeah, I was just a little afraid. I was like, oh, we changed some policy in it. So, yeah, okay, I'm good. So I think those are great to have, and if, if we're making them a little bit tougher, that's awesome. Okay, Ms. Welsh.
I, I have nothing else to say. I'm.
Oh, your hand is still up. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did, but I, I'm pleased to hear what the board members were saying, because I think it'll be and we'll double-check both between Mr. Whitely and myself to make sure we don't have any repetition, but certainly incorporate those items also.
Right. Vice Chair Alvaro Seron Ruiz, I can't see you. Do you by any chance have your hand up?
You can't see me?
Oh, now I can. Do you have any comment?
No, I do not. I, I agree with majority of what was shared. I just excited to see, once this is an actual, like, policy form, then we, we can start getting public comment and other board members' perspectives on it as well.
Exactly. Okay. Are there any more comments from any of the other board members? Are you, Ms. Welsh? Mr. Whitely?
I just want to say that some of the policies that were discussed are already in your, and some of the things that were discussed are already in your policies. The State Board elaborates a little more, and again, I don't think it hurts to, to, to elaborate more, but again, some of these issues were not addressed at the board meeting, so to the extent that they have been problems in the past, I didn't bring them up because I did not experience the Board having those problems.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Because I have a couple of comments. First, I, I don't think that, Mr. Whitely, you should feel constrained to to, to think these comments. In other words, don't feel like you have to say one, two, three, four. You change it around because we're changing it. Okay, we're making a recommendation to the Board. So in my opinion, you can feel free to do that. Ms. Welsh, I thank you for looking at the the Governance and Operational Manual from the state. Did all, did all of you get that manual? Because I, I thought we sent it out. Did the rest of you get it? Yes, no, should I have it reset?
When did you send it out?
Oh, I didn't send it out, but I think I can ask Cindy to make, I'll ask Cindy to make sure you guys have it, okay? Because it's a good read. It really is a good read. Okay, so I'll make sure you get it.
Okay, great.
For my, my recommendation, one of the things that I wish to add to it, if, if we don't already have it in it, and I didn't see it. Well, I saw it, but it wasn't in-depth enough, is working culture. And it says, "A dynamic board officer welcomes good ideas, encourages innovative thinking, and refuses to tolerate inappropriate and divisive behavior." I think this is the place where we need to have something in it about officers and, and the expectation of those officers. Now, Mr. Whitely, you can come back to us with that. I think it's someplace in another policy, but I think it's just one blurb. I think it would be good to have it here, to speak to the leadership of our board and, and the roles and responsibilities there. And that's on page ten, if you need a reference. Oh, you have it, okay. And then.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
You're absolutely right. There is another policy specifically about board, board roles and, and positions. So, yeah, you're absolutely right.
Okay, so we need. Okay, so we need to find, I'll find it, but we need to find that, Mr. Whitely, and we may not need to, is all I'm saying. Or maybe we do, but you can help me with that, or help us with that. The other thing that I, Ms. Welsh really captured just about everything that I had checked. We also were asked to deal with the virtual and remote participation. And I don't know, Mr. Whitely, do we want to do it in this policy, or do we need a separate place for that?
There's a specific policy for, there's a specific policy dealing with virtual participation.
Do we have, I don't know if we have that, do we?
Participation in meetings electronically. I think it's ninety-three sixty-four.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll park that in the parking lot to get to nine three sixty-four. Okay, I wrote that down. Thank you. So those were my comments. So if we have no more recommendations to Mr. Whitely in this meeting, then, Mr. Whitely, please take on the advisement, the recommendations made today by the Policy and Governance Committee, and bring back to our next meeting on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two for a further discussion, and we'll keep it as a discussion item until the group feels comfortable with what you present to us, and then we'll make a recommendation from there.
I think Robin has her hand up.
Oh, Robin, I'm sorry, didn't see it.
I just wanted to ask one question for clarification, because I had marked all the information about the officers also, but then I went back into our policies to just see if we had anything that addressed that, and we actually, we have, first, we have, under the, we have one called Organization. It's all the officers. Then there's one called Duties of Officers, Members, and Auxiliary Personnel, and then they talk about the Chair as one policy, and then again, under Duties of Officers, Members, and Auxiliary Personnel, then they have one about the Vice Chair. It doesn't include anything about the, what's considered standards of conduct, and so my clarifying question is, would you prefer to have that, the information about the officers sitting in these policies that specifically address the officers, or would you prefer to have it in the Code of Conduct?
I really don't know, because I need to look at him. What are the, what the rest of the committee members, what do you think? Sonia, especially you, Ms. Williams, what do you think? Because you're probably more familiar than. Do you think we should just put them side by side and do a comparison?
No, I think it's always good to do a comparison, since we're going to focus on, on getting it right and not rushing on time. So I think we should do it side by side.
Okay, so, Ms. Welsh, if you would, please, if you could send me or, or send them to Cindy, the those, it's three different policies that you just referenced?
Right, and they have very little substance, so.
Right, so that's why I need to see them and send them to Mr. Whitely.
Oh, I'll send it also to Mr. Whitely. I'll send it to Cindy and Mr. Whitely. Okay.
Thank you so much. Okay, I appreciate that. Are there any more comments? Mr. Whitely, from what the board members have said and from the administration, today, do you have any more questions of us?
I do not, and all this is captured in the minutes correctly.
Yes, I think Ms. Adeline is capturing minutes. Okay, but it is recorded, so we can't go back and capture it as well. All right. Thank you so much. Now we will move to four point O, Policies for Review or Action. All actions taken on policies today are pursuant to Board Policy ninety-three forty, Roman numeral four, paragaph, draft seven D. There are two policies for revision. Four point one, Policy four one one two, Appointment of Personnel. I will now yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to give us an overview of revised policy four one one two. Colleagues, may I have a motion to forward revised policy four one one two, Appointment of Personnel, to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment?
So moved.
May I?
Second.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved and properly seconded to send the policy to the full board. Now we can have a discussion. The floor is open. Ms. Welsh?
Okay, so Policy four. Okay, um, so Policy Four One One Two, Appointment of Personnel, um, has, um, always addressed the appointment of administrators, administrative and supervisory personnel. And the, the, and I want to point out, first of all, what you'll see that, um, Cindy has posted both the policy that is currently on the website and then has posted the policy with the revisions. And I asked her specifically to do that only because in this policy, because I would have had to just deleted everything out of the current policy, and then you'd have all those deletions and just writing. I just, I just started from the beginning on this one, but I think wanted to make sure you got to see what is currently sitting on the website and that the public could also see that, so that you can see what the changes are. And I'll, I'll point it out as we go through also. Uh, but just as to give you a big overview, and then we can go through each, each of the pages. Um, probably the most important things that, that point, point points is that a policy is addressing uh, what is required out of Education Article, Section Six dash two-oh-one. And in that article, it, um, actually talks about the fact that, uh, CEOs or superintendents have the right to, um, they are required to, uh, give a recommendation to the board when it comes to certificated administrative and supervisory personnel, uh, but that, when it, but that the board is the one who does the appointing. However, this particular, um, article, actually, section talks about the fact that there is an exception. And the exception is for Prince George's County Public Schools CEO. And what it says is that the CEO for Prince George's County Public Schools shall hire and set the salaries of chief executive positions and other necessary executive staff in the CEO's office. So I definitely incorporated that piece into the policy, because that was not there before. I did specifically lay out, though, that the Board of Ed is responsible for the appointments of the certificated administrative and supervisory personnel. And then the, um, law also states, though, that, um, the CEO is responsible for appointing non-certificated administrative, administrative and supervisory personnel, uh, which for our system, if you look at A S A S P three, I think it is, is from grade thirty and above, or the administrative and supervisory, uh, personnel. So those are the big changes in terms of who's doing what, appointing or hiring and setting salaries. But then I also added in there, uh, this section, as comes again from Education Article Four dash one oh seven D of the Education Article, it says that, um, um, it is, so the responsibility, once the superintendent provides the information about the nominee that she is nominating to be appointed by the Board of Education, it is, uh, the responsibility of the board then to deliberate and discuss that person. And then, just like you do all the time, you do, you act, your vote actually occurs in open session, which you have at the bottom of all of your, you know, of your board meeting agendas, it'll say, voting on items from executive session. So, uh, I just put that in there, so we're clear about the process for what the board does when they appoint these, um, employees. Um, so if we want to just go through the policy really quickly, um, can you, um, Cindy, go back to the beginning? Okay, I did, um, beef up the whole, uh, policy statement and to ensure that, that we're looking at highly qualified and competent personnel in leader, in leadership positions that really are moving the school system forward to achieving excellence and equity in our learning and our work environments, and that our workforce and operation excellence is, is that, we have excellence there for effective operation of the school system. So I sort of beefed that section up. And I also, under the purpose, I did also add the fact that, um, when we're going through this process, we certainly, the board would certainly want it to be comprehensive, so that you're picking the best candidate, but also that it's an equitable process, uh, as, as people are applying and, you know, trying, you know, trying to get a position. So then, if Cindy, if you could move forward, down, further down the, to this page. So then at base, page two, it says, "As a CEO, just right out of the law, shall hire and set salaries a chief operating officer, a chief financial officer, a chief academic officer, chief of staff, a board liaison, and other necessary executive staff." So that, that's really directly from the law. Section number two is from your current policy. It says, "Upon the recommendation of the CEO, the board shall point the following certificated administrative and supervisory positions." And that you have that currently in the policy. And then I did add that the appointment of non-certificated personnel that the board grants the, the authority to appoint these non-certificated, uh, personnel, um, at grade three or above, uh, to, um, to their positions. I did include also acting positions, that the CEO may appoint employees to fill administrative and supervisory positions, um, on an acting basis until they, she actually finds, or they, I should say, HR goes through the process and finds someone that she can nominate, uh, for a permanent, uh, administrator, supervisory, certificated administrator or, uh, supervisory position. Then we have the, um, again, the appointment process, which was pretty much laid out in the current policy. So it just talks about the fact, uh, is a slightly little bit additional information, but that to be able to deliberate, that the board would need a job description of the positions. And then the, the nominee's resume, which would have all the educational qualifications, any previous professional and career experiences, and other information that might be pertinent to the nominee's qualifications. Um, and then the final piece, which I just shared, again, which is based on the law, is that these recommendations of the nominees and their qualifications will be discussed in the closed session. Uh, but the decision will be made, um, by the board, um, about the appointments of the nominee at the next public board meeting. And I know a lot of times you'll have the, your closed session right before the public meeting. And then at that meeting, at the end, you say, okay, we will now vote on items from the closed session or executive session. So that is pretty much it in a nutshell. It just sort of clarifies, um, what the role of the board is and what the role of the CEO is. Board member Mickens Murray, you're muted.
Thank you. Uh, board members, do you have questions for Ms. Welch? Okay, seeing none. I have one quick. Sonya, I can't see. For some reason, I can't
I would say, none for me.
Okay. All right, um, if, since no one has any questions, I have one. Recently, we gave the CEO the authority to hire all the staff in the board office. Is that covered in this policy or do we need another policy?
So this, this policy, and I only reflected what was in the previous policy. So the previous policy was addressing administrative and supervisory personnel. So it did not talk about other staff, like, for example, your teachers or your support staff that were hired in the board office. So now, I did check other counties' policies also to see what they have, and some broke it out and some combined all the positions, so that you could incorporate the piece about, um, you know, not just administrative and supervisory staff, but you could incorporate, like, your teachers and, you know, that, all that whole group, as well as paraprofessionals, your administrative assistants and secretaries that work in the board office, all those people. So, um, and the law is very clear that the, it would be the CEO's responsibility to then, um, actually appoint those positions. So, which would go to what you're concerned about, board member Mickens Murray. So, I mean, I could take this back and make revisions to it. It's really your call how you would like to handle it.
Uh, the rest of the board, uh, in the comments? Any of the other board members? Then I would like Pam, um, hmm. We just made a motion authentic for public comment. I would really like for Ms. Welch to take this back and include, all of the position and bring it back to us. So do we need to do a different motion?
I think you're currently in discussion. So
Okay, right.
If whoever made the motion will, and I'm not a parliamentarian, but I believe the first person that made the motion can amend the motion, can move to amend the motion or to strike the motion if you want it to be.
If, if the rest of the board agrees with me, um, in this committee, that it needs to be reflected in a policy, then, um, let me know. Who made the motion? Ms. Williams, you're muted.
No, I didn't make the motion.
Oh, well, who made the motion?
I think I, did I say so moved to this one?
And if you guys agree, then we need to do something with the motion, because it needs to be reflected on a policy. Either this, this policy or another policy. And I don't think we need a whole bunch of policies to do one thing, so. Mr. Alvarez? Seron Ruiz?
I guess I'm moved to, uh, have Ms. Welch amend the current policy to reflect, what the chairwoman's request that all positions be included in one motion.
Thank you. Thank you. So the, the motion is to, um, the motion is for Ms. Welch to take the policy back to include all personnel actions and to bring it back to this board for us to, um, to send to, for public comment. Not at the next board meeting, but I'd have to look at a calendar to see what. Okay? All in favor?
Well, uh, did someone make the motion?
I'll make, I'll move that motion.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, it's been moved. Any, any further discussion?
We need to, who seconded?
Alvarez made the motion. You said, I thought you seconded.
Oh, I'm the second? Okay.
I think you're the second. Okay, so it's been moved and, and seconded, uh, for Ms. Welch to take the policy back to include all personnel, bring it back to us, uh, to send for public comment. Any, any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passed. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. All right, um, four point two, Policy Fifteen Hundred, Parent and Community Advisory Council. On August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, Policy Fifteen Hundred was voted by the committee to go to the full board for public comment. There were no public comments received. Colleagues, if there is no additional discussion for revised policy Fifteen Hundred, Parent and Community Advisory Council, may I have a motion to forward to the full board on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, with a recommendation to advance consideration as first reader?
I move to push Policy Fifteen Hundred forward to the full board at their next board meeting.
As first reader.
As first reader for revision.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Okay, motion, motion passes. Four point three, Policy Sustainability. On August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, Policy Sustainability was voted by the committee to go to the full board for public comment. There were no public comments received. Colleagues, if there is no additional discussion for revised policy Sustainability, may I have a motion to forward to the full board on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, with a recommendation to advance consideration as first reader?
I move.
Was.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to forward the po, policy as first read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. Uh, motion passes. Okay, four point O, Policy Zero One Oh Nine, Financial Impropriety, Improper Conduct, and Whistleblower Protection. On August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, Policy Zero One Oh Nine was voted by the committee to go to the full board on September twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two for public comment. Uh, the next two policies, along with this one, I'm giving you an update. There is no requirement for a vote, because we've already voted on it. So I'm just letting the public know where that policy is in our process. Uh, four point five, Policy Thirty-five Hundred, Naming of Schools, School District Facilities, dedicating areas of school and school district facilities or grounds, and erecting monument. The update, on August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, Policy Thirty-five Hundred was voted by the committee to go to the full board on September twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two for public comment. Next, four point six, Policy Five One One Three, Student Attendance Absence Intruency. The update, on August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, Policy Fifty-One Thirteen was voted by the committee to go to the full board on September twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two for public comment. That takes care of the three policies that we had already voted on to go to the full board at the twenty, uh, twenty-second board meeting. Four point seven, Policy Four One One Four, School Official Financial Disclosure, um, form, I mean, public, I'm sorry. Policy Four One One Four, School Official Financial Disclosure. I will now yield the floor to Ms. Welch to give us an update on this revised policy.
Um, so, we had originally planned, and we look at our schedule, that we would be addressing that this, the, having the uh, committee recommend that it be rescinded, because that was also the CEO's recommendation. However, the ethics policy, and the reason that the rescission was recommended was because of the fact that once the ethics policy is in place, uh, our revised ethics policy, that does address everything that is currently in four-one-one-four. And so there's really no reason to have four-one-one-four. Right now, the ethics policy is with the State Ethics Commission, and actually, on September fifteenth, the Ethics Commission is supposed to be reviewing our policy to let us know whether they have approved it so that we can use it and everything. Um, and so, uh, we will know by our next committee meeting whether or not the, the Ethics Commission approved the power, the, uh, zero-one-zero-seven, the ethics policy. And if so, then we can, you can, the committee can, um, address the rescission of Policy Four One One Four.
Okay, and that's doing our, our quarter eight, um, committee meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions, uh, from many of the board members regarding what Ms. Welch just shared?
None for me.
Okay, hearing none. Five point O, Follow-ups and Next Steps. Follow-ups from previous board meetings will be posted on board dots upon receipt. Five point two, Next Steps. The next Policy and Governance Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two at five P M. This meeting will be virtual. Please check the board page on the P G C P S website for more information. Closing remarks from me. Thank you, guys, for, um, I thought it was a, a good meeting. Thank you for your participation. To, um, Ms. Adeline, I appreciate all the assistance that you gave me in preparing for this meeting. It's very organized, and thank you so much. Ms. Welch, you are a great team partner with this committee. We appreciate you. Thank you so much. And Jessica, thank you for all you have done to help this meeting be smooth sailing today. So I appreciate you for that. And Mr. Joe Day, I've complimented your staff, so those are compliments for you too. So I don't need to compliment you. All right, thank you, guys. Uh, is there anything else from anybody before we, um, sign off? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
They moved and seconded. We are adjourned. Thank you, guys, so much. Appreciate it. Good night.
Good night. Thanks, everyone.